Okay, at this time here, I'd like to call the Coventry Zoning Board to review two session. At this time here also, I'd like to point out the fire exits are to your rear. The two exits to my rear take you into the building. So the only fire exits are to your rear. I'd like to have an approval from the board of the minutes on October 6th and November 3rd, 2021.
Motion being accepted as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion made by Russ, seconded by Keith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, if you also had a chance to look at the approval of the 2022 calendar dates. Yes, we do. You're correct. Okay, if I could have a attendance, local.
Mike New.
Here.
Keith Bludia.
Yeah.
Glenn Doak.
Here.
Bob Crow.
Yeah.
Russ Lockley.
Present.
And Ian Adi.
Okay, with the record review, we have
Six.
Six members participating tonight, so we have a full board. Also, with this time here, the approval of the 2022 calendar dates. Does anybody have any conflicts on these dates that you know at this time? Okay. I'd like to have an approval of the calendar dates, a motion.
So move.
Seconded. Keith made, Russ seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Okay, we have ratification of last month's decisions. First one is Robert and Deborah Scalen.
Mr. Chair, those were from actually back in October, so I believe we're going to have to continue those scaling into MERS's applications until Vice Chair deGrady is here.
Okay. Well, that one here, we got to hold over.
Scaling into MERS.
That one and the next one.
Okay, next one, okay. So then we jump to the application of Eric D. Tiff, assesses plot map 49 lot 60, 223, Shady Valley Road. The applicant was seeking a special use permit and a dimensional variance to construct a 16 by 35 addition with the purpose of an in-law 10 feet from the property line where 50 feet is required. Do I have a motion that we ratify that decision on the floor?
So move.
Okay.
Seconded.
Keith made it. Russ is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay. That next one then would be Donald Berger, says his plot map 308, lot 34, 410 Hopkins Hollow Roads, zone R5. I'm going to seek a special use permit and a dimensional variance to construct a 14 by 20 additional 36 feet from the front property line where 45 feet is required. Do I have a motion to accept the ratification of
So move.
Application made by Russ.
Seconded.
Seconded by Keith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to announce for the record that the Coventry Zoning Board of Appeals application of David A. Del Pozo and Claudia M. Del Pozo has, they have requested a continuance to the January meeting, January 5th meeting, 2022.
Okay, so that's the zoning board of appeals, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve this here extension to January meeting? Anybody opposed to it? Keith made the proposal. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, so that's the, which was on the board tonight, okay. All right. Next, we have new business, and I think new business will start off with Paul W. Olivera.
Actually, it's old business.
Can you read that application for the record, please?
The owner and applicant is Paul Oliveri, location is AP 60 lot 1.1, 1532 Main Street. So in his village rural commercial, applicant is seeking a special use permit for the approval of a drive-through on an existing structure.
You have an attorney here, Mr. Olivera?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, John Mancini, on behalf of the applicant, the owner of the property.
Okay, give your full name and address.
Sure, full name, attorney, John Mancini. My address is 56 Pine Street, Providence, Rhode Island. I'm an attorney licensed in Rhode Island, and I'm here representing the owner and the applicant for the petition for a special use permit.
Okay, are you going to give testimony, sir?
I will, I will be giving testimony, yes, and I also have a witness as well to give testimony.
Okay, I'm going to swear you in. At this time here, Mr. Paul Olivera, please give your full name and address.
Paul W. Oliveri, address is
Okay, I'm going to ask you both to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so, little background, the property is located at 1532 Main Street. It's an existing structure. The applicant has proceeded to obtain development plan review from the planning board that was heard in October of this year. The planning board reviewed not only the applicant's proposal for development plan review, but also the recommendation with regards to a special use permit. But the applicant is specifically requesting is, under your code, a special use permit for a drive-through at this particular location. The property is located within the VRC, which is the Village Rule Commercial. And as you know
Excuse, I'm going to have to interrupt you for a minute. I'm going to have to sit down, and at this time here, I would like to appoint chaplain in charge. Okay, because I am
You're a butler.
A butler, okay. Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption. So I'll refer to the new chair. It was a quick move. So the, as I noted, the applicant speaking is seeking the special use permit under the code for the drive-through, and the property is located in the Village Rule Commercial District. However, restaurant drive-through is not a permitted use within that zone. The applicant, however, under the existing code can still request a special use permit for the drive-through due to the fact that this property has been utilized as a restaurant or a drive-through in a continuous manner for a significant period of time, thus being what's known as a non-conforming use. So our position is, is the property as it stands now, although it has a specific zoning designation, that zoning designation is post the occupation and use of the prior building that was on this property. And that drive-through with that building runs with the land, it's not specific to the building itself. The code does permit for the expansion or the creation of a drive-through of a non-conforming use, provided we seek a special use permit. And as a result of that, we've made the petition to this board to do exactly that, to essentially bring the entire building up to conformance with the zoning code. And in doing that, we've also, as I noted previously, filed a petition with the planning board for development plan review. The planning board did have occasion to review that and also granted the approval for development plan. In doing so, it reviewed our petition for a special use permit under section 432 of the code, and it found that we had met the specific requirements for a special use permit. And I believe it's part of your package, but for the record, I just want to quickly go through the different criteria necessary for an applicant to satisfy in order to obtain a special use permit. And rather than using my words or the words of the applicant, the planning board did a very thorough job of reviewing the application and determining that actually the applicant had met the criteria. First prong is safety egress and ingress. The planning board determined that the traffic flow, traffic flow patterns are being designed in coordination with the planning commission and the town engineer, and found that the proposed drive-through would not impede automotive or pedestrian safety, traffic flow, or access to the property. And as you can see from the plan that's been designated, the drive-through as designed on this property provides for adequate queuing, which means that there would be, you know, significant amount of cars can be maintained on-site without any disruption to traffic along Main Street. It also has been designed in a manner to not disrupt any parking. The uniqueness of this property is its size. It's over an acre, it's exactly 1.13 acres. The building is located almost centrally, but enough to allow for a clean sweep around the building, an entrance and an exit, and again, not interrupting both, and access easement that's already on the, on this property and recorded as well as the traffic. One of the comments made by the planning board was to denote and designate appropriate area for drop-offs and pickups, as well as for trash, as well as snow removal, and that's been depicted on the plan and shown. The second element that was reviewed by the planning board is the parking. Planning board indicated, and as defined by the plan, there's sufficient off-street parking available. And again, as I noted, it was adequate trash storage and delivery. Planning board stated the property has adequate space for storage of trash receptacles and room for trash pickup, availability and location of utilities. This property has all the necessary utilities. They're on-site, they're, they're existing, they're working, and there's no, no issue for that. Next is the idea of buffering and screening. This property also has adequate and necessary buffering. It's exhaustually served by, by some vegetatives to the, to the, to the, if you're just looking at the plan, you'll see it over to your, to your right. Required yard and open space, it's not applicable. And general compatibility with surrounding lots, as the board is aware, this is usually a very important prong to consider, and that is whether or not the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and consistent with the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And I think that for many of you who have probably gone by this multiple times, if not probably on your way over here, you can know clearly that this is compatible with the surrounding area. And certainly, the planning board has already denoted that it's consistent with the comp plan. And again, compliance with industrial performance, not applicable. And as I noted, general compatibility with the comp plan. And finally, the, the planning board made the finding that the project would have no detrimental impacts to public health, safety, welfare, or morals. Rather, we think that this would be a positive addition to the town, being able to put this property back into utilization, back onto the tax row, allowing for the drive-through will then enable this owner to go and seek the usage for a restaurant. The property has been vacant for some time, and we have tried to obtain tenants, but have been kind of blocked by the lack of permitting on the property. So with the drive-through, now having the planning board approved our development plan review, we believe we're ready to finally put this property to proper usage with the, with the town and back on the tax rolls. So with that, I do have the applicant here, so if there's any questions with regards to what we're seeking, why we're seeking it, and our design and our plan, we're prepared to answer those questions.
It's pretty straightforward. It's not, we've looked at it.
You know, we've, we've beat this horse as much as you can. We've, you know, the applicant too is credited, has really spent the money, the time, and the effort to go and get
Beautiful building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it needs to go on its tax rolls.
I'll try to go with Russ.
Uh, well, that's a good question. I don't know if he's, if he has a concept yet.
It's probably going to end up a coffee house if I don't lease it up to somebody. I've been dealing with some tenants, and I've just got to make a decision and hope I can get them back in the door because of all the stuff that's been misplaced or whatever. It really tied the place up long. So I wish I could tell you exactly what's going in there. Does it have a lift? No, I turned that in. I don't want that. How long's it been? 20 years. I've been sitting for 20 years, I probably, I'm just, you know, I'm kind of burnt out with it. If I got to get it reopened, I have to go in there, set it up, and make it happen. I'll do it. It's for my kids.
But I, I think the board can appreciate too the, the need for the drive-through. You know, many businesses that are looking for new locations or trying to relocate nowadays, given the history of the pandemic, a drive, not having the drive-through is
Huge.
It's huge, it's almost fatal. And, you know, whether it's a small coffee house or it's a, it's a heavy traffic restaurant, a drive-through has become vital. And I, and now it's become such an anomaly that you don't even, many people don't even think about stepping into a store anymore. It's just a reality for the short term.
Everything's changed.
Yep.
Okay, guys, want to take a seat? We'll see if anybody in the crowd wants to ask a, ask a question, either for or against, just, or just a question as to what's going on. Anyone? You said you had a witness, do you want?
No, my witness is Paul.
Okay.
He's incredible.
Wow! No, 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 that's not, that's not correct.
The neighbors here know
We provided full notice, provided notice of this hearing, it was an important hearing. I think he, I would, I would, I, I only live down the street a little ways, and I would love to see something there, just to have something there.
He just wanted to come over.
That would be really nice, but coffee's good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for you to vote on it.
Yeah, I second.
Motion's made and seconded. Motion was made by Keith and seconded by, by Eddie to vote on this tonight, while in favor, signaled by the usual aye. You oppose, nay? The ayes have it. So I will call on a vote individually. Mike? Keith?
Approve.
Lanny?
Approve.
Eddie?
Approve.
And the chair also approves. Motion's approved.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Next application under old business is Hill Woodland Properties LLC and James and Marion Hill. Location is AP 33 lot 6.11, 119 Hill Farm Camp Road, zone is RR2. Applicants is seeking a dimensional variance for 122 feet of road frontage. Lot 2 will have 103 feet of frontage where 225 is required.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please give your full name and address.
Attorney Stacy Ferrara. I'm a partner at Noel and Bernero Cronin and Ferrara. I'm here for Tom Cronin, who is actually before Hoppington this evening. We represent Hill Wood, Hill Woodland Properties LLC, James and Marion Hill. The property at issue is assessors plot 33 lot 611, also known as 119 Hill Farm Camp in Coventry. It's my understanding that this was last before the board back in November?
This is a continuance.
Right, so I don't know if you want the dog and pony show again, I understand that
I'm all set with that.
I'm all set with it, but I do have to swear you in. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but truth in front of this board?
I shall.
Okay. Yeah, we heard this last month, and we continued this over so everybody could have a chance to get on and review the product. Actually, I have no problems with the application. I'd like to open this up to the rest of the board. Russ, how do you feel?
Just like last month, but I, I, it's a great, we're going to be able to do something with that property, so I'm, I'm in favor, and it's really not going to be detrimental to anybody around here. It's, you know, I think it's a good fit.
All right, Ed?
I have no issue with it.
Okay, Mike?
No issues at all.
Keith?
No issues.
Lanny?
All good.
Okay, yeah, it'll be as presented. Okay, I'd like to, unless there is somebody here that would like to speak on this application, for or against it. Is there anybody here?
Motion to vote on this tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Russ, seconded by Keith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start rolling down there. Mike, Mike, how do you vote on this application?
Approve.
Approve? Okay, Keith?
Approve.
Lanny?
Approve.
I approve. Russ?
Approved.
Ed? Okay.
It's approved.
Motion's approved. All right.
Next application is Brian A. Williams and Stephanie Williams. Location of the property is AP 323 lot 115, 110 Hamburger Road, zone is RR3. Applicants is seeking a special use permit and a dimensional variance to construct a 14, 1,475 square foot addition to the existing non-conforming dwelling. The addition will require 8.3 feet of relief from the northerly corner of the lot.
Okay, applicant?
So.
You want us to hold off a while?
If you can hold off and jump on to something else.
Okay, no problem. All right, can you read the next application?
Under new business, we have Antonio and Cheryl Angelino. Location of the property is AP 104 lot 85, 562 Main Street, zone is RR20. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to legalize existing two-family residential dwellings.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please step up to the podium, give your full name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. Antonio Angelino.
Okay, your address is?
I live at 8 Cali Way, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm going to swear you in. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay. Last time you came in front of here, you were seeking an in-law, now, which I agree with, you were seeking to do a apartment, correct?
Were seeking a special permit, special use permit, to get a duplex under the recommendation of the develop, planning and developing. We've gone through some things, we had the inspector out there, it can be conformed, so we would like to see if you get it legalized as a two-family home.
Okay, you put the other unit in yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
But as a license contract, which I'm still licensed today.
Okay, did you get the electrical permits and everything?
Absolutely, they're all up to code according to the, the standards of, I want to say when it was completed in
So plumbing and electrical, you can drop off the permit you had, and the, and you can drop off all the inspections and approvals?
We didn't, we didn't go any, we didn't pull any permits yet
Oh, you haven't pulled
To perform a duplex according to the planning and development, we're seeking application, and then we will go forward with permits.
The work's already been done.
I'm sorry?
The work has already been done.
Yes.
How many years ago?
It was done as an in-law apartment about five years ago, six years ago, so it didn't go completely to a duplex, and with the recommendation of our planning, Mr. Crossman and Mr. John Dudley were trying to move forward to correct the situation into a duplex.
All right, John, you're going to have to obtain plumbing and electrical permits.
Right, so the reason we did this in the order that we did is because he cannot apply for a building permit at this time because it's not a permitted use in the zone. So he would apply for the building permit, and it would get to our office, and we'd put the brakes on anyway and say, no, first you need to get the special use permit. So once he gets the special use permit, it would be subject to him getting all the proper permitting for electrical and
So you're on top of it, you know?
Yes.
All right, so he's going to have to, so you're going to have to have the electrical inspector and the plumbing inspector go in there and approve what's been done.
Yes, and, and the building department has already been put on notice that Mr. Angelino is, is taking these steps, and they're ready to go.
Okay, you're okay with all the parking and everything?
Yes.
All right, and I agree with you, adjacent properties are mixed, commercial and residential and industrial use, so this would not be incompatible with the area. And, but I just would like to make sure everything's done safely.
Something to the fire department also?
Russ, you build anything?
Um, it's a two-family dwelling, so if he was going to like build something, he'd have to review plans with the fire marshal, but it's an existing building, and we actually would like to get on air, but ultimately, it's three families alone that we really don't, a lower that we really don't have too much to do, to say with actually what's going on inside of it. But if they were going to build this or put an addition on, they'd have to keep, but that's already been done. Did you, did you contact the fire department at all when you put this addition on?
Well, we pulled the primary permit.
Yeah.
I don't remember the date, John, you have the date on that?
All right, so we went, and we got all fire codes, and I have, according to that
date, okay, we have all the fire codes up to date in each level and everything else.
It as a, as a, as a part of a
Joint effort.
Sure, it's a, what do you call it, a
You could do a
Stipulation to have, make sure the fire department is okay with it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we can comply, I mean
Fire extinguishers.
If I can add, in addition, the building inspector did come out with the recommendation with the planning board, they'd looked at all the fire codes, they looked at the, you know, for what they can tell.
Mm-huh.
All right, all the fire alarms are in both sections where they should be.
Now, they've got a good fire marshal here in town.
Yeah, so, you know, we're trying to stay within compliance, and we're trying to move forward with this progress, with this project, so.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is the board would like to see stipulations of fire code, safety inspection, and also plumbing and electrical safety, cause mechanical codes approved.
So upon, yeah, so upon this here, we'll pull all the permits that necessary.
All right, so that'd be with that stipulation.
Yeah, that's fine.
All those stipulations, all right, and is there anything else any board member would like to put on this application? I hear nothing else, okay. So I, I'd like to vote on this, and with the, do a roll call vote with the stipulations as suggested. Okay, Mike, I'm going to start with you again. You approve with stipulations, correct? Keith?
Approve with the stipulations.
Lanny?
Approve with the stipulations.
I also approve with stipulations, Russ?
Approve with stipulations.
Approve with stipulations.
Okay, applications approved with stipulations. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, board, and Merry Christmas.
Okay, next one.
The next one is your, your attorneys. So we can move right back to Brian Williams and Stephanie Williams' application, the attorney is here.
Okay, good. Please give your full name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Joseph Brennan from the Law Office of Joe Schicciati for the applicant address, two, current address, 240 Chestnut Street, Wall Record Island, 02888. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for your consideration. I had to be in Smithfield for 6 o'clock, they moved me up, and I get to walk right back here, so I appreciate the deference in moving our item on the agenda. The first item, I think the applicant asked me, I want to make sure, I sent an email, but I just looked at my phone and realized I didn't get a response back, so I'm not sure if the town did get it. For the revised application site plan that showed the side yard setback now being 5.5 feet, do you have that?
We did, I just, because it previously been advertised a certain way, I couldn't just switch it mainstream.
That's okay, I appreciate that, thank you. So, so that the board knows, the original plan was amended after much discussion with the applicant, after we had already been before the planning board, because all applications for what we're asking for do go to the planning board for a recommendation. At that meeting, the board felt for my client, they understood the situation he was in, but they had decided that because of their own precedent that they had, they were reluctant to offer a recommendation, so they instead offered no recommendation rather than a negative one because they didn't want to hinder our application. But the application that you have before you is at 110 Hamburger Road here in Coventry. All the lots down on that area are much smaller All the lots down on that area are much smaller lots than the zone allows because they were created years and years ago. And as zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan have been updated and amended, the zone in that area calls for much larger lot sizes. So when you look at the area, you can see there's very, very irregular shaped lots. I kind of jokingly say that our lot really looks like the state of Texas. So when you come off Hamburger Road, you'll see, if you look at the site plan for our lot specifically, our current driveway access is over to the left of our lot and we actually cut through a neighbor's property. And then on the other side of Hamburger Road, you see our lot line juts out and there's another neighbor's property. The side yard setback relief that we're looking for, we increased from 1.5 feet to 5.5 feet. You'll see that. That's at the front corner of where the road would be of our amended site plan. That area is that, is it the neighbor's yard? In reality, from the street line, we wouldn't even have to ask for this relief if the neighbor's property wasn't also so incredibly irregular shaped.
So the road goes through?
Yeah, the, our driveway goes through the neighbor's property currently.
The road itself also goes through his property, so he's got land on both sides of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, in addition, the, the issue that we have is that because the.
This is this guy's land.
The neighbor's land.
This guy's land is right here. It comes across, so the road runs through the middle of it.
Well, he doesn't own any property on that side of the road.
Not him, this neighbor does. That's what he's trying to explain to you.
Okay, well, what I have questions on, and this is for our attorney. I cannot approve anything that's on somebody else's property. And if our attorney looks at this, this plan is very confusing where he has to go through somebody else's property to get onto his, his driveway is on somebody else's property.
Well, it's a right of way.
Yeah, if I could.
Keep going.
Does he have a deed of right of way?
Yes, so, just to continue quickly. So the current access is through an easement right of way. But so just to, just to quickly finish, my, my quick point is, we actually, the initial plan was to subdivide and buy the neighbor's property that's directly in front of our lot that's on the street. But because the comprehensive plan doesn't allow for subdivisions on undersized lots of that kind, because the neighbor's lot can't meet the zoning ordinance either for that subdivision, we have to instead ask for side yard setback relief. As part of our application, we'll actually be making an improvement to what's there. We will no longer be using that easement right of way and our access will come through a driveway that we'll be installing directly from Hamburger Road that will go into our proposed addition, which will have a garage as, which is part of our proposed addition. The driveway isn't shown on the plan, but I can stipulate that to the board and that's, that's another net benefit to what our project is offering.
Is, is the driveway gonna be on that Texas side?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
That's the side that bumps right into Hamburger Hill.
You're right.
Okay.
We don't know where that is or how it's gonna be set up.
No, but as, as part of, and I think the solicitor could weigh in if needed to the board, where we, as part of our access, a driveway is needed as for, in approval before the zoning board. And we also have the right of way on the other one, so we do provide access, but I'm just stipulating to the boards, they know that we'll be abandoning that and moving it in the future.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
If I may, I just want to stand up because I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Are you proposing the new access to the property would be here?
Correct.
Come in here?
Yes.
Okay, and, but just a question, is this line, does that lie along Hamburger Hill? Or, or is there a, it looks like there's a little space there.
I think that lines along Hamburger Road. That space is, I think that the engineer just showed the pavement line.
Okay, so you have a deed of easement over here to the existing access?
That's correct. And even the neighbor behind us goes through two different properties to get to theirs.
So you're, just so I'm clear, and I think the board's clear, you're proposing that if you get the proposed addition here, you're gonna be accessing the property in this area?
That's correct.
And you'll be abandoning this?
Our portion of it, yes. The neighbor will still need it, but we won't.
This driveway will still be necessary to access this property, correct?
Yes.
There's a more, see, I think that's.
So the neighbor is gonna have to go through his property to access his house.
The neighbor will, but the neighbor's already doing that.
They're already doing it.
And they're gonna continue to do what they've always done. I think the issue really is, I just, it would be necessary to verify this. Right, because the drawing isn't clear and the lot is very regularly shamed.
So, so as a whole, I know that looking through the criteria for granting a variance from the literal requirements of the zoning ordinance, there's five standards that have to be met. The first, that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not the general characteristics of the surrounding area. I think that that's easily shown by the very, very irregular shaped lot. The fact that we can't meet the zoning ordinance through the subdivision idea that we had because the ordinance has changed over time and the minimum lot area is actually three acres. The applicant is really just, has lived in Coventry for a long time. He wants to continue to stay here, so this addition would allow him and his family to grow and stay and not have to move somewhere else. The hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. They didn't create these lots nor the right of way or easements. They purchased the property that way. The granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area nor impair the intent nor purpose of this ordinance. In reality, I think it actually improves the area with us having, being able to abandon it, take access from the road directly to our own lot. And in addition, it actually furthers the zoning ordinance because of that. And then finally, the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. We, you know, we did have the 1.5 feet after much thought and process. We've even lowered that even further. The applicant's really just looking to have an addition with a garage. That way he can utilize the property the best that he can for his growing family and to be able to stay on the property that they love. And that, in granting that, the dimensional variance, the hardship would be more than a mere inconvenience. As I mentioned, it would be difficult for him to enjoy it as his family's growing. And he would prefer to not have to use that right of way that comes with certain maintenance requirements, things along that nature. And also because we're an existing structure with this, we do require the special use permit. And in granting that, the board has to show evidence that ingress and egress to the lot will be safe. I think that this is a big improvement in that area specifically. We will have the off-street parking and loading areas as we're providing for a garage, trash storage. It's a residential area. There's plenty of utilities in the area and the onsite waste treatment has and or will be approved as needed. The screen. I'm sorry?
I'm looking at the plans. Thank you.
Well, it's just, it's just pulling, it's where they don't need the addition, so where you're gonna move it?
Yes, that will be moved and has, it has been permanent or not? But it, but it will be permanent as part of the process because it's required in order to.
So you're gonna get a state, a prosetic system?
Correct.
That's gonna, that's gonna be moved now, right?
Yes.
Before we start building.
There's no, there's really no necessary for screening or buffering as it's a residential property and it will remain as such. No signs, required yards. We're complying as much as we can and general compatibility with the lots in the area. They're all this size. We're not looking to change our lot size. And no, we're not industrial and it won't create any conditions that would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and morals and welfare. It actually would be an improvement. I do have the applicant, Brian Williams, the owner here, if the board had any other specific questions that I can't answer. But that is the travel of our application and our application as a whole.
I have a question on the, on the driveway. Where exactly, or were you proposing to bring the driveway through from the road? How far away from the property lines of the other?
I don't know the answer to that, but if there is an ordinance requirement, we would certainly meet it.
Yeah, there's distance ordinance, right, of a driveway coming into the property lines?
He's got 35 feet there plus.
The driveway, these, the back of driveways, construction.
Yes, there's, there's no setback to our driveway.
But a driveway would only be.
It would be 12 feet, 15.
So there's plenty of space along that 35-foot area.
Right.
Do you have any drawings of what the house is gonna look like? You talked about a garage and whatnot. I don't have any of that stuff in my paperwork.
So it's in addition to the existing building that exists, okay?
Correct.
I just want to make sure I had it. That looks different, you know?
It would not be a second home or an in-law, no separation of the walls of that kind, aside normal rooms.
That brings up the question of the existing 15 by 15 building.
It would remain.
It almost looks like a residence. It could be at any time. More than a cabana. It's got a bedroom. It's got a toilet. It's got a full heat system, air conditioning.
The 15 by 15 that's on the property right now?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna ask, give your full name and address.
Brian Williams, 110 Hamburger Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's existing 15 by 15 right now?
Right.
It's, yeah, it is there. It does have plumbing. It's a tired unit.
Electrical, most likely, because of the distance in between will probably tear it down just because for the deck and all that, it's just. You propose to tear it down or you leave, is that part of the proposal to tear it down?
At this point, it is not part of the proposal, but we are thinking about that.
No, we have a problem. It looks like another whole residence. I know it's only 15 by 15, but it's a very, now where you get your own entrance now. It could be easily rented out.
Yeah.
In theory, it could. Does it have a kitchen?
No.
It doesn't have a kitchen, so it wouldn't qualify as a dwelling unit and it would, so I think that would be a good evidence to why it couldn't be rented out. Of course, someone could always install one, but you could say that about any shed anywhere in the town, so it had plumbing.
But this will see, we normally don't allow garages and things like this here with plumbing and electric and just so for that reason.
Yeah, I, all I can say is it's exist, it's there. We're not proposing to add it there. And he hasn't used it in the past as such. I think that's good evidence that he wouldn't in the future.
When he bought it?
Yes, 10, 12 years ago, it was there with all electric.
Would you, you use it as a, well?
It's on Johnson's front. We throw all our stuff.
Right, what I'm saying, they use it as a bedroom for guests or something?
We can, we could. We don't that now.
It's a shed?
It's where we throw our life jackets or, you know, all our stuff.
He calls it a cabana.
Yeah, it's a cabana, keep people out of our house, you know, wet and that kind of stuff, you know, they change in there.
I mean, it's very nice what it is, just as I just want to make sure it doesn't turn into a residence.
I don't want anyone living there.
And if the board wanted to stipulate to that, we'd be, we'd be okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. If you were for that, yeah.
As you said, it's got a bathroom now?
Yes.
Yes, it does have.
Location.
Okay, so you're gonna re, you're gonna put a new septic and whatnot, existing building would be tied into the new septic?
Yes, just as, it's tied into the Sessors now.
Do you have any idea where the septic system is?
I would assume that we're gonna put it where my old driveway was.
Hmm.
That's a whole home.
It looks farther than where it really. It's not that far, yeah. Plus, we're, I mean, at this point, we're pumping it up, pumping things up anyways.
Very beautiful home. I went there today. It's very, very.
Well, it's just a park. I would do. But you can see, if you did drive there, you can see that Hamburger Road, where hamburger and Brian Hall stops, there's huge potholes because the town does not take care of it. It doesn't get plowed. We have, garbage is right now, we bring to the end of our driveway, but that might change. It's been kind of a nightmare. And there's one, two, there's like seven people on that right of way, seven houses, and who's taken care of it?
This was created 100 years ago.
100 years ago.
Camps.
Exactly.
Right, but they've done a lot of improvement, many of the houses.
Everything, everything is.
Everything is much nicer in the last 20 years.
Absolutely.
But I am concerned with that little residence, so you'd put that in a stipulation that that would not be used as a residence whatsoever?
Of course.
All right, with that stipulation, I feel much more comfortable.
Stipulation that he gets the permits from D E M.
Correct.
Before he even starts, for the septic.
For the septic.
Yeah, that's key.
I don't know where they go to the bathroom.
All right. Any board members have any other questions on this application? Mike? Keith?
No, sir.
All right. Ed, Russ?
No, I'm good. Honestly, follow the stipulations.
Did our attorney have any questions?
I don't. I think the addition of the stipulation that that 15 by 15 building not be new life as a residence is a good addition. It is a good thing to add to your decision, but the representations of the applicant on record.
Offering it, okay. John?
I'm good.
I'm good, okay. All right, I'm gonna, I don't see anybody here, but I'm gonna ask if anybody would like to speak on this application for or against it. See nobody here. That's what I can see, so I guess nobody's gonna speak for or against this application. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that we vote on this tonight.
Second.
So, okay, motion made by Keith, seconded by Ed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to do a roll call vote. I'm gonna start with you, Ed. How do you vote on this application?
I approve with the stipulations that the cabana doesn't turn into a residence and he gets all the needed applications filled out with the D E M before he starts the addition.
Okay. Russ?
Approved with the stipulations quoted by Mike.
I also approve with same stipulations. Lanny?
I approve with the same stipulations.
Keith?
Approved with the stipulation.
Mike?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other business to discuss tonight? Okay, we have no further business. I want to have a vote to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, made by Russ, seconded by Keith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Thank you all for coming tonight.